Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time-travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at CommonCoreWorks.org.
I'm a student at Harvard.
MIT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage: support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, from kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.
Before we get started tonight, I want to share with you that the boardroom is decorated this evening in preparation for our Super Scholar Celebration on Thursday. We're recognizing nearly 100 graduates who have been accepted to a top-20 college and university, according to U.S. News &amp; World Report, and this is the second year that we've done it. And we're very, very proud that the first year we did it, we had 70 honorees, and we are now up to 91 honorees. So I know this is a particularly committed group of folks to OCPS by virtue of the very fact that you did Leadership Orange, and we're going to talk about that in a minute during the graduation. But you're welcome to attend that Thursday night if you'd like. We're really, really excited about the program. We are going to go right into the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We at Orange County Public Schools and in our entire community this year, before we go into our moment of silence, would like to recognize that we lost a very, very special person to Orange County Public Schools: Lydia Gardner, our Clerk of the Courts. And before Lydia was the Clerk of the Courts, Lydia was a member of this school board, and she was also the Chair of this school board. So as we go into the moment of silence, each of the board members, I know a number of you wanted to say some remarks about Lydia, because many of us were very close to Lydia, and she was very near and dear to our hearts. I'd like to share that my one lasting memory of Lydia is, and it's funny, it's a very common theme in just about what everybody has said, but that ever-present smile. Lydia, when she walked in a room, had a smile that would just literally light up the entire room, and that smile would never leave her face. I've known Lydia Gardner for 25 years, and in the 25 years I've known Lydia, and I wish -- I think this is a great tribute. I think we would all like to be able to say this, but I think very few of us can say this in life. I don't think I ever once saw Lydia Gardner mad about anything in the 25 years that I've known her. She was also one of the warmest individuals that I've ever met, and she was one of the most intelligent individuals I've ever had the pleasure of dealing with, and she always gave great advice. And board members, you may get a slight smile at this after I got elected to this board. One of the first persons I called was Lydia Gardner. And I said, "Do you have any advice?" And she gave me a wonderful briefing on each and every one of you. And it astirred me in great stead. And over the years, I would go back to Lydia on occasion. You know, we have the Customer Service Initiative. The first person I called was Lydia, because she did wonderful things in that area with the Clerk of the Courts. And the last thing I want to say before I go to anybody else who would like to make a few comments is, the one thing that struck me, and this didn't make it into any of the media reports, is I saw Lydia only a month and a half, two months ago. And we all knew that she had had a battle with cancer, but I think, I, like a lot of other folks in this community, thought she had won that battle. And when I heard that she had passed, I was absolutely stunned, because it immediately occurred to me that she must have known the last time I saw her. And I just think that that demonstrated exceptional courage on Lydia's part, that even in her last days, she kept it to herself, and I'm sure only to her close friends and family. And I just couldn't help but think, since she's passed away, how incredibly brave she was in the last days and weeks of her life. So I, for one, am going to miss Lydia Gardner immensely. Ms. Gould.
I did not know Lydia well. I have known her over the years, but in the past year, as I was campaigning, I saw her more often than I probably had normally seen her except out at some community events. And she was so encouraging and so supportive and so gracious, and you know, that is her warmth and her encouragement, or you know, part of what kind of kept me going at certain moments of the campaign. And she was such a community asset, and I just want to publicly say thank you to Lydia Gardner for paving the way for so many of us.
Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too knew Lydia Gardner, and I knew her very well, and I considered Lydia a friend. And how I considered her a friend, even though she was very close to my predecessor, Katie Adams, when I was elected to this board, Lydia personally came and welcomed me aboard. And that really shocked me. Not only did she welcome me aboard to this school board, she gave me advice also. And the nicest thing about it, when she was elected to the Clerk of the Court, she made sure that we were up on that floor with her in her reception in the courtroom, because you know, we may never get back up there again. So I just thought it was so nice. The nicest thing that I always remember when Lydia came and told us, I know her as an educator, as a teacher, and also with the Sprint Company, and how my husband was involved in all of that too with her, but the nicest thing is how she opened the courthouse door for us. But we would often laugh. When I saw her at Mr. Blocker's retirement, that just touched my heart, and she knew, and she told us then, that she was ill. But for her to make it out to Mr. Blocker's retirement just touched my heart. It meant so much to me. The last thing that I always tease her about is that on the ninth floor, when we're in the superintendent's boardroom, we look out on the courtroom, and every now and then, that boardroom gets very heated. And she said, "Every now and then, you could see her office." She said she looks down on us. So I'm glad that she's looking down on us. But I often say, "Lydia, I can't believe that you moved from the ninth floor to the top floor in the Clerk of the Court office." But she said, "I will never forget Orange County School Board and what it did for us." So as an educator, we salute our educator and her family. We express to you our deepest sympathy.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. I didn't serve on the board when Ms. Gardner was here, but you know, what a wonderful tribute to someone who has all these accolades about being friendly, about being cheerful, about being encouraging, about being intelligent, about being a businesswoman. I mean, when you think about all the accolades that people are given about her, there's not a negative in the bunch. I mean, there's not, her reign was marked by this, or she had to struggle with this. She was so well-respected, certainly very much of a role model for women in elected positions, those women who are trying. So you know, for that, I'm so thankful for her, that she really led the way of being a good public servant and an elected public servant in such a gracious way. Really showed how you can do it with still having a heart and having a backbone and being strong. So I'm so thankful for that and grateful to her, and I too just want to wish her family and the community, you know, my condolences and sympathy. I mean, this community has certainly had a star whose brilliance was cut short too fast, too soon.
Ms. Moore.
I too am really going to miss Ms. Gardner. I go back with her probably about as long as she did, about 20, 25 years. I can remember, my first experience with this school board was over Clay Springs Elementary back in about 1989, and she was the first person I called, and just always so willing to help, and we have something in common. So this part, it's hard for me, both of us graduated from the University of Michigan, and every time I'd see her, we would talk about our Michigan days, and had opportunity to be at a conference with her about a year and a half ago. It's hard to believe that she was that ill. She just never let on, just always encouraging everyone else and smiling, and such a delightful person to be with. And I know she was a terrific school board member, school board chair, and she certainly has been a wonderful Clerk of the Court. And she'd always tell you, "If you've got to be down at that courthouse and you want to see a smiling face, come up and see her." I think I did one time, you know, to get up and see that beautiful, one time. I didn't want to wear out my welcome, but she was welcoming and just kind. So she'll be missed, and we really appreciate her service, and my deepest sympathies to her family.
Mr. Roach.
When Kathy Marsh asked us to put our thoughts on paper about Lydia, you know, you go back and you try to think, "Well, you know, what could I say?" And it was very easy for me. One word stood out for me that I rarely use. I realize I rarely use this word when I describe people, and it doesn't mean that it's not true with people, but the word "class" came to mind. She was a classy woman, and I thought that was, that made her stand out. She was, I'm the longest-serving board member here, and I did not serve with Lydia. A lot of people think that I did. I was supposed to have served with Lydia. When I first ran for school board, I lost my election, and then when I decided to run again, Lydia was very, very supportive of me, and she would make sure that I was invited to all the same events that she was invited to. She introduced me to many, many people. That's back when it was a county-wide election. And she's, I remember saying, just before the election, she said, "Now, Rick," she said, "now, when you get in there, we have a lot of work to do." And then I didn't get elected. But I do remember that phone call when she wished me well, and I thought, "That was a huge disappointment," because I thought, "I would have really liked to have worked with someone who wanted me to work with them so badly." So I did not get to work with them. Of course, I won my next election, and that was a great thing. But I remember about Lydia, but I think also what stands out, when she was Clerk of Court, I actually had to use the Clerk of Court a half a dozen times while she was up there. And what I noticed about her is what we really have made important to us this year is the customer service at that, look at the nodding heads over there. She had that. Not her, but her organization. I'm saying, you know, you shouldn't have to go to the clerk if you want something necessarily, but I felt like she really permeated that particular organization, and that just goes to show how one woman, one leader, can transform an organization with that attitude and that smile and that classiness. That's what she did. So that can be replicated, and we can do that too for Lydia, all right?
Thank you. Mrs. Robinson.
Well, I too have the same experience as most of you. I've known Lydia about 10 years and really got to know her when I was campaigning six years ago. And for me, the thing, not only is the smile amazing, but the energy. She's the most energetic person I ever met, and to watch her in campaign mode, we were working the same cycle, I learned so much about campaigning from her. She's just, and she was so tiny, but this tiny little bundle of energy, she was just amazing. I mean, someone, the newspaper described her as a dynamo, and she was. She was a dynamo, and she was an immaculate dresser. She was classy dresser and always looked fabulous. I bet she looked fabulous walking out to get the newspaper in the morning. She was just a beautiful, amazing woman. So I too was crushed when I got the word last week. I saw her two months ago, and she really was holding herself together very well. So I'm going to miss her.
Ms. Cato.
Lydia was a dear, dear friend, and I sit here today because she encouraged me a whole bunch of years ago, and then she decided to run again. And then she called me and said, "I'm not running." And very few people know this, she leaked a story to the newspaper that somebody was going to file their papers on the last day of qualifying. And I told her, I said, "Lydia, I'm not doing it. I'm telling you, I'm not doing it." And she said, "I already told the paper that you were doing it." And I said, "Lydia, I told you I wasn't doing it. The time's not right." So when the time was right, she took me aside, and she said, "Here are the things you need to do." And you know, I had the opportunity to work with Betsy. You know, I've talked a lot about asset development, and Betsy was on our team. And so I came to know Betsy and her children, and I didn't really know Chris, but she told me, "You need to go to my son's office. He's got something for you." I said, "Okay, well, where's your son's office?" "Well, you go down to the old Florida Gas building, and he's on the top floor." I said, "Okay, fine." Didn't know what I was going for, but he said, she said, "Go." Well, it happened to be that it was a campaign contribution. This was new in my whole life of becoming this public official. So I met Chris, but I didn't really know Chris that well. Well, it turns out that Chris is now my son's golf buddy. And so, you know, our lives just keep being intertwined. And so then, as many of you know, I was the fortunate one. I battled breast cancer, and on May 20th, I'll be five years cancer-free. And two years after I was diagnosed, Lydia was diagnosed. And I called and talked to her and kind of told her the ups and downs that I had experienced. And she fought bravely. She and John, who was the love of her life, he helped take care of her during the first round of the chemo, and you know, we'd always see each other. My hair had grown out, but she had a great wig, and we would laugh about the great wig. It was a great wig. And you know, she was fighting the brave fight, and I kept running into her with John, and she'd introduce John as my friend, my friend John. And then all of a sudden, she showed up at a Republican Women's Club meeting, and she had gotten engaged in Italy, and she had her new ring. And she was so happy and so excited. And you know, we, our paths, you know, kept crossing, and then I had to go meet with her, because I chaired the American Cancer Society Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk for two years. I wanted Lydia to take a picture in the pink bra with me. And she told me, "No, I got to campaign. I'm not doing that." I said, "Well, Lydia, they already took the picture of me." And she said, "Nope, not going to do that." So I coerced Deborah McGill in to go wear the pink bra with me, because I needed three people, and Lydia was like, "No, I got to re-campaign. I can't be in this pink bra." So the Clerk of the Court's office, I can't remember, I think they were the third-largest money-raising team the first time I did it. Well, last year, she was the second-largest team, and she had all of her clerks there, and they were dressed up in their pink, and they walked, and they were so excited. And you know, she fought, she fought a fight that she never gave up on. Time ran out for her, but she never gave up. And what I have learned in all of this and reflecting, because I never understood why they came to me to be the chairman of this walk, and you know, what I have discovered is, when it comes to your lap, you take it, you embrace it, and you do it, and you figure it out later. And you know, she lived a life the way she wanted to live it. She left this world loved, adored by her new husband, and when I saw her, she said, "I'm married, I'm married." And I said, "That's great." She got married, now you'll appreciate this, she got married on 11, 11, 11, at 11, 11 a.m. Now, only the Clerk of the Court would go for all of the elevens. And she said, and Joe, because I saw a picture, and she said, "Look, I even could wear my hair up." And when you've lost your hair and it finally grows enough that you can put it up, it really is kind of a big day. So I have lost a dear friend, I have lost a confidant, I have lost an angel who walked the walk with me as a breast cancer survivor, and I know she's an angel looking down at us, and I know this community is better because Lydia spent some time here.
Thank you. Superintendent Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I certainly would not pass the opportunity to say just a couple of words on behalf of so many employees, principals, and administrators that worked with Ms. Gardner. I was a principal over 20 years ago when I first dealt with Lydia Gardner, and I will tell you, the word that comes to mind is gracious. She was always, she certainly had a magnetic personality, but she was always so gracious to me. Gracious when I was principal at Brookshire, gracious when I returned from Charlotte many years later, and gracious and very encouraging when I was named superintendent here. She was a champion for children. She was certainly a tremendous public servant who will be greatly missed by this community.
Well, thank you. If everybody would please bow your head and please join us in a moment of silence, and as you do, keep in your thoughts and prayers the family of Lydia Gardner. All right. We have a recognition scheduled this evening, and it's a very, very special one for the school board and for Superintendent Jenkins. Three years ago, our school board embraced an idea that Mr. Roach championed that turned out to be a tremendous incubator for community involvement. The Leadership Orange Program, developed by our Public Relations Department, has given close to 90 citizens a chance to come experience firsthand what it takes to educate 183,000 students each and every day. It has turned them into leaders within their communities and within their business circles on the important subject of public education in central Florida. The 27 members of this year's Leadership Orange three class came from all over the district, representing many unique interests and backgrounds. Their diversity reflects the diversity of our student population. Class members spent a half-day each month for eight months, it's quite a commitment, so thank you all very, very much for your commitment, going to elementary, middle, and high schools, Orlando Tech, and even the Pine Hills Transportation Center to learn everything they could about our building program, school budgeting, teaching and learning, community engagement, exceptional student education and operations, which included everybody's highlight of every Leadership Orange class, getting to get behind the wheel of a school bus and drive a school bus, which I've yet to do. I need to interject myself on that day.
I'm going to do it.
What's that? Yeah, so would I. This evening, their journey ends, but certainly not their involvement with the school district. As some of the most knowledgeable citizens on the subject of public education in Orange County, we hope that we will hear from them often, and we mean that sincerely. Y'all are our most valuable resource when you give us advice and guidance on issues affecting our public schools, so please do that. And I hope and expect that we will hear from them often, and that we can call on you to participate in Orange County Public Schools as we strive to take what is already a very, very good Florida public school district and turn it into the best urban district in the entire United States of America, or as the top producer of successful students in the country. By your participation, we are certainly a better school system and a better community. You've learned many things that can help you connect Orange County Public Schools to the community, and through your leadership and influence, you can make a difference in any number of schools and for hundreds, even thousands of students. I personally want to thank you, and on behalf of the board, all of us would like to thank you very, very much for your commitment, and tell you how impressed we are that you took the time out of your very busy schedules. For those in the audience, you should know that each and every person in this class is successful in their own field, they all have very, very busy lives, and it's a tremendous commitment to apply for and be part of the Leadership Orange class. And I want to go off script for a moment and say thank you as well for taking the time to get educated. My probably greatest frustration as a school board member, and I suspect that probably speak for many of us, is that I find that there is such a disconnect between the reality of public education and what people think. And that's not always just all positive, but just knowing what's really happening. I don't find the disconnect, I'll be candid with you, between myself and those who know public education and parents, because parents tend to know, but I find an incredible disconnect between what reality is and what those who don't have children in public school yet think, or even more so with those who went to public school 20, 25 years ago and their perception. So I hope you will help us interject, both good and bad, a healthy dose of reality into the conversation and the debate, because that's really what the Leadership Orange class is all about. It's to let you see these inner workings of Orange County Public Schools and the challenges we deal with, our successes, and to be very frank with you also sometimes, to help us learn where we can be better, because we can always strive to be better. So thank you very, very much for doing that and for taking the time. I'm going to now turn it over to Dylan Thomas to lead us through our graduation ceremony. Mr. Roach, I'm sorry, I'm going to turn it over to you to lead us in our graduation ceremony.
Thank you, Chairman Soblet. I will tell you that when I was first elected to the school board, I went on a fast track to learn about everything I could. I remember getting in this office, and I thought, "I don't know anything that these board members know." And I remember, I probably took, I think I got the Certified Board Member Certification faster than any board member in history. I got it in six months, 96 hours, and I just couldn't, I gobbled up everything I could learn. But when I learned it, like you, Mr. Soblet, I was amazed at the people who would complain about the school system. And so the way I did that, I basically challenged each one of them. I met every person that ever called and complained, met them for coffee, and I found it was the easiest sell in the world to tell people reality-based schools versus the perception that they had. And over the years, I thought, "Boy, we need to multiply that." You know, I don't need to be the only one out here doing this. So I brought this idea to the board several years ago, and to their credit, I asked for a small, a small committee to study the possibilities, and all seven of us decided to be on the committee. It was a very large committee. So they were very interested. We all jumped on board. Dylan and his team took it and turned it into what it is today. Now you will be somewhere around 90 graduates that are out there, I hope, you know, correcting people and telling people the truth and how to support our schools. So I've got, we have 28 graduates tonight, and I've got a little excerpt from about five of it, if you'll bear with me. How's that? So they picked out some of the things you said. So I want to tell the group this. One person says, "I was already a pretty strong advocate for the value of public education and of our county schools specifically, but after spending a school year touring, listening, and working through all the issues we face, I am even prouder and more inspired to keep on advocating, and that's what we want." Another person said, "I thoroughly enjoyed my experience as a Leadership Orange participant. The last session was truly a home run, and I left feeling like I had learned so much that I am an official ambassador for Orange County Public Schools." I wonder if you know which one of you said that. They didn't make this up, did they? Somebody said that, right? "I have formed some great relationships that will continue long after graduation. We are an armed team..." Did you say that? "...we are an armed team to provide the community with good news and ideas that OCPS share with us. I am sorry for wrecking the school bus on the last class." Who wrote that? I just made that up, just because it's in the middle, I wanted to break it up a little bit. "I am leaving this program so impressed with what the OCPS system does with limited resources and such incredible challenges. I am honored to have been a part of the group. I am certain I will be an ambassador for OCPS and the community after being a part of this group." And finally, "I learned so much about what education is truly about and how it takes a village to educate our children. I've been involved at school, SAC, PTA, but I was overwhelmed at what you do every day. Thank you for the opportunity to learn about OCPS and become even a, an even bigger advocate." So from all of my fellow board members, we want to congratulate all of you. We think it's just fabulous that you endured this long-year session and continued with your, the learning, and we hope you'll be advocates for us with the other 60 or so graduates. So thank you very much for that. Let's go ahead and graduate them.
And board members, I want to share one aside with you to show you how real a graduation this is. One Leadership Orange member, Heather Tranum's mother, actually flew down for graduation tonight from Massachusetts. So ma'am, we're welcome. We're glad to have you. Board members, if you could come out front and join me for the graduation ceremony.
Just line up in front of the chairs, in the front, in the front, in the front of the chairs.
In the front of the chairs.
In the front of the chairs, yes. Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, school board members, I present to you the 2012-2013 Leadership Here are your graduates, leading, by the way, Marucci Guzman Beard.
Not here with us tonight, Audrey Brown nor Mary Carrico, but very good attendance, until Angela Melvin.
Thank you for everything.
You're welcome. And last, but certainly not least, and I would dub the best bus driver in the class, She was the best driver. Now, board members will please take a seat in the chairs. We will make arrangements here for a group photo. Chairman and Superintendent, please, thank you.
I'm a student at Harvard.
MIT.
Caltech.
Columbia.
Our advantage: support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.
All right. Mr. Roach, I know you had another recognition that we'd like to go to.
Board members, this is very unusual, and I do apologize for, in one regard, for kind of breaking protocol here, but it's toward the end of the year, and I have a student that I would like for you to get to know tonight that just really touched my heart. And this would be the kind of thing we normally wouldn't recognize at a school board meeting, but I just had to do this. I thought it was important. First of all, I'd like to have a Boone High School student come join me while I read this. Glenn Hollingshead, would you come down with me? Glenn is at Boone High School, I don't know what year.
Senior.
Senior? I'm going to be shaking his hand in a few weeks, that's for sure. But you know, I got a, I think how this started was, I got an email from Glenn who said to me, right after the Sandy Hook tragedy, he said to me he was putting together a little benefit. He's a musician, and he had a band, and he wanted to put the band together and raise some money for the Sandy Hook kids, and he invited me to come, and I thought, "That's so cool," but I couldn't. I was out of town, so I told him, "Please let me know how it goes." And of course, he wrote me later on. And I was so impressed that he followed through with it, that I went out to Boone to meet him, sat with him for about 30 or 40 minutes, and I said, "Glenn, you just need to come down. I need to..." So Glenn, here's, I'm going to read you what he wrote me. He said, "Mr. Roach, after hearing and watching the news about Sandy Hook, the Sandy Hook tragedy, all I could think about was if it had been one of our schools here in Orlando and not Sandy Hook. How many people's lives would have been affected by it? That's when I decided that I want to help in some way. So after I spoke with my mom," and by the way, Mrs. Hollingshead is here, "after I spoke with my mom and a couple of friends, I had it set in my mind that I was going to help the Sandy Hook families and the community of Newtown, Connecticut by hosting a benefit concert. Then we decided, the group of students that got on board with us, as well as their parents, and of course, my mom, that we weren't only going to give to their community, but ours as well. That's when we decided that we would donate canned foods and non-perishable items to local shelters in Orlando. But the band raised $1,100, and he sent a check to Newtown, Connecticut for 1,100 bucks." He says, "What really drove me through the rough parts of the planning process was whenever someone, whenever someone told me that I can't do it and that it wouldn't succeed. After being stubborn, I wanted to prove them wrong. I also had my family's support through the whole process. Without my mom's help and guidance, I would have gotten lost and wouldn't have known what to do and when to do it. The whole process has been the biggest learning experience of my life thus far, lessons that no book or teacher could truly teach me." And by the way, Mr. Roach, my mother will also be at the meeting with me. She was down here. And you know, and when I was talking to Glenn about it, he initially, he tried to get, he actually tried to get a spot on campus to do this, and for whatever reason, it didn't happen. He couldn't get that, so that didn't stop him. He went out and found the local church that hosted his band, brought the kids forward, raised the money, and sent it off. So I just wanted you to meet Glenn Hollingshead and his mother, who supported him through this. Would you please just give him a round of applause, board members?
Thank you, Glenn. I'm so proud of you. Thank you. Okay.
Well, Glenn, what an incredibly selfless act. I think that's wonderful, and Mrs. Hollings said you should be so incredibly proud of your son. And Glenn, I have a feeling Mom did a lot of work for this too, so thank you, Mrs. Hollingshead. And what a wonderful gesture. Mr. Roach, thank you for bringing it to our attention. We're so proud to call you an Orange County Public School student. Thank you. Board members, I now have the great pleasure of giving two very deserving board members their years of service pins. And I don't think they knew that this was coming tonight, and recognizing them for their unwavering support and commitment to the school board and to the entire district. First, we have a 20-year service pin for District III school board member Rick Roach. Rick, well, let me brag on you first. Hold on, will you come stand over here? Mr. Roach was elected, Mr. Roach was elected to the school board in November 1998 and reelected to his fourth term in 2010, making him, I think, the dean of the board, if I'm not mistaken, the longest-serving board member. He gives so much of his time to this board, his loyalty to staff and students in this district is to be commended, not to mention his dedication to his constituents in District III. He has lived in Orange County for 30 years and worked in this district as a teacher, a counselor, and a coach for 14 of those years. He also serves on the board of the Orange County Foundation for Public Schools. So, Mr. Roach, on behalf of the entire board, it's my great pleasure to present you with And the next school board member is District V's Kat Gordon. Mrs. Gordon is receiving her 10-year service pin for her work on this school board. She was elected to the board in November of 2000, and before that, she was a librarian and a counselor in Orange County Public Schools for 25 years. She also gives so much of her time to this board, and her loyalty to the staff and to the students in the district is to be commended as well. We all know that she is a champion for all educators, and she is a true life learner herself. And when I think of Mrs. Gordon, I think of Beyonce's phrase, "Furious," because she is a furious advocate for her constituents and for the children of Orange County Public Schools. She is currently pursuing her Doctorate of Philosophy in Education with a specialization in organizational leadership. Mrs. Gordon, on behalf of the entire board, congratulations on, I feel bad saying, more than 10 years of service to the board, 10 years on the board, but really 35 years of service when you add it all up to the children of Orange County. And that doesn't include the service you've given to the children of Osceola County, because she's currently an active teacher and media specialist down in Osceola Public Schools. All right. Before we go into our strategic plan update, let me make a couple of preliminary announcements as we get to the business of our meeting. We would ask for the courtesy of audience and board members, please silence your cellphones and pagers. If anybody is here to speak to the board this evening, please fill out a yellow form such as this. You can get this form from Ms. McGill, who's at the far-left-hand side of the dais, and when that agenda items come up, I will call on you to speak. At that time, you will have three minutes to speak and to address the board. We ask that you comply with Robert's Rules of Order and keep it confined to the issue on the agenda and not make it personal. If you have any schedule constraints, please let Mrs. McGill know, and if possible, we will try to accommodate you. Our next agenda item is a strategic plan update. Before we go into that, I would like to notice, or like to take notice of the fact that May is Haitian Heritage Month Awareness and Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And as everybody on this board knows, but not everybody in the viewing audience and audience may know, we have a very, very diverse school population here in Orange County Public Schools. Last time I checked, over, help me out here, Superintendent, if you know off the top, over 140 languages, I think, are spoken in Orange County? 163, I was low. 160 different dialects are spoken, and I've lost count of how many different nationalities are represented by heritage and by immigration in our schools. So those are two very important aspects of our community. Both those are large populations in Orange County Public Schools. Communities across Orange County will celebrate the achievements and contributions of their heritage with festivals, government-sponsored activities, and educational activities for students of that heritage and culture. And we would just like to recognize both those populations within our school family. So at this time, Superintendent, I'm going to turn it over to you for our strategic plan update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If Mr. Thomas would come to the podium. Each month that we meet, one of our board meetings, we always bring you some update, analysis, and assessment of our strategic plan for this evening's board meeting. We will speak specifically to the public relations portion of the strategic plan, and that update is being brought to you by Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Soblet, Superintendent Jenkins. I'd like to go over some of the things that are visible to you and to all of the public that are on our school board website, which is our district scorecard, addressing mostly sustained community engagement goals on the top level, and they typically cover a couple of specifics that are meaningful and important to the district. Partnerships, planned events, and public opinion. All of those are ingredients in the business of sustaining community engagement. One of the items on our district scorecard that we address in the area of partnerships is one that is directed mostly through our Community Resources Department, where the objective is through our Partners in Education program to attract and engage as many businesses and organizations as possible, not only at a district level, but also at the school level. And so what is our strategy is to engage as many as possible, and the way we go about it is to teach those in the schools how the best methods are to attract community partners to help the individual schools. They communicate with them regularly to encourage them and give them counsel on how to best bring them into the fold. They set appointments to renew and recruit district-wide partners, which has been very helpful and fruitful this past year with several very notable organizations that can support more schools than one, and that goes a long way. We've also taken on an initiative this year to attract and engage faith-based organizations to become partners with individual schools and multiple schools and the communities in which they serve. We do very much in the way of publicizing and recognizing those partners through website information, newsletters to schools, media releases. And one final thing we do with quite a bit of success is, the school board has a partnership with an organization known as Fuel My School. It's a web-based program where anyone can support an individual school through numerous means. means, through granting of gifts, through shopping online, or through fundraising efforts affiliated with each and every school that they align themselves with. Our scorecard is indicative of perhaps some of the economy. When we set the baseline in 2009-10, we had 2,494 partners who were engaged with either the school or the district. And in 2010-11, we saw a very good growth surge, and increased by 100, to 105%. In the following year, what we found was, though, that there were quite a few partners who were coming in, who were either not coming in to the extent that they could have been, or they were introducing elements of their partnership that weren't quite up to the standards and expectations of a partner. And unfortunately, that caused a dip in our goal objectives to an 88% commitment to our goal. We also found that in the last year, we could improve on that, and we've been improving with each and every school to get our partners more engaged. And even with some months and weeks left in the school year, to get all the schools registering their partners, we're at 94% of our goal, which is still above our original baseline, 2,494 number. In the area of public opinion, one thing we do, and we certainly don't want to over-survey our public, but we do conduct one every year, and we've posted this year's opinion survey to the website today. And our objective is to try and get a very thorough and extensive sampling of our parent household population. We do an evergreen survey, one that we can compare from one year to the next, and our objective is to try and achieve at least 2% of the student population as part of our sample. In our scorecard, we have done it again with over almost 6,000 responses in this current year's survey, which is 3.4% of the student enrollment household population. One other target we have is to generate positive news. And certainly, through our Media Relations Department, we have very aggressive and ambitious objectives to try and out-news, bad news, with good news that we generate from the district. And we do that in multiple ways, by pitching stories locally to the local media, as well as to the national media, and it's been very successful. And through our Media Relations Department, you'll see that we have been very busy and far exceeding our goal, and we look to improve on our, or up our goals in the future. We've already generated 427 stories this school year of a nature that are positive stories about the school district, as well as quite a few to national organizations that cover our business. Now, we also, of course, have an extended scorecard, which Public Relations drills down deeper to try and achieve some more narrower objectives. One of them is to coordinate visits by the superintendent around the district. Last year, we missed our goal by just one, but this year, we have exceeded our goal already with seven additional from our baseline, and we even have some more visits scheduled this school year before school is out. One of the methods of success in getting partners engaged with the school district is to have good participation at the school level, in being trained and coached on the ways by which they can engage volunteers with the school, and likewise, do the same in bringing in partners in education. And the objective and the goal is 100%. We want every school to be manned by coordinators who know what to do and know who to call when they need assistance. We've improved participation last year to 95.5%. This year, we reached 97% training participation. In the high-performing and dedicated team effort, as you know, we have a sales and marketing department that is very busy trying to generate some non-traditional revenue for the sake of the school district's needs and efforts. In 2012, we exceeded our goal by over $4,000, and currently, this year, we are already $21,000 better than our higher goal of $210,000. We are now at $231,000 net profit from our sales and marketing efforts. In the area of efficient operations, one of the things we value highly is the penetration we can make in households with our Connect Orange calls. If the school does not have good phone numbers, then we're not reaching our public. And so, one of our missions every year is to address the schools with the lowest performance of connections, and counsel them, coach them, and work to get every one of those 18 having a higher success rate in connecting with their families at home. And in 2012, we succeeded with all 18 schools to improve their delivery by 10% of the calls that were sent. This year, we've done it again with almost 13% successful improvement among our lowest 18 schools in the district. Another area we will try to do in our branding is to make sure that we have a good, consistent look in all of the materials that the district produces. And to that end, the goal was to be beyond what we were already doing in support of other departments within the district. We wanted to improve on that by adding more and more projects that would have a common look and feel, and enhance the value and perception of our OCPS brand. In 2013, we've already reached our goal of seven additional projects, with 15 additional projects from those that we've done in previous years. One other very important factor that we address in support of our school-building program is, every time a new school is renovated or built, we have to go in and create a closed-circuit TV area for the school to generate their stories and learn. And this past year, we had six schools that opened this past August, and we had them all school-ready on the first day. Likewise, there were three more schools in January. We were ready in our TV studios on those first days back. At this time, we're already on track with all five schools that will open in August of 2013. Finally, our last effort in our extended scorecard is to foster two-way communication between the district and our general public. And as you witnessed tonight, obviously, we have a very engaged group of citizens in our Leadership Orange class of three. It's on our third year. Earlier this year, we were at Oak Ridge High School for a very well-received Realtors School Summit, where we had Realtors from all over central Florida come to learn about our school district in what is essentially a mini Leadership Orange event. And then, of course, next week, we will be engaging the public in large measure at Oak Ridge High School once again, with our State of the Schools addressed by the superintendent and the school board chair. That, Superintendent, thank you.
Members of the board, certainly, engaging our public is critical to accomplishing our mission, accomplishing our vision. Our mission statement says, "That's the only way we're going to lead our students to success, is through involving our entire community." So, keeping them engaged and keeping a tab on that engagement and our efforts to communicate with our public, we believe, is critical. We're certainly happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
All right. Board members, any comments or questions? Mr. Roach?
Well, just a comment, actually, from one of our leadership graduates tonight, which was kind of ironic, it matched up. I was asking him how his experience was, and he, of course, really was bragging on it, but he said, "But there's just one concern I have," he says, "is that even, in spite of the fact that I am involved, I'm on our PTA and SAC and Leadership Orange," he said, "I'm finding that there's so many things other than what I've learned that is out there." He says, "It's just amazing how much information," and he, it wasn't scolding, but he said, "We've got to do a better job of getting information out." And I think this, of course, this is like 10 times better than it was 10 years ago when we were getting information. So, these guys are pumping it out like crazy, but isn't it amazing how much there is that we still need to get out? So, I congratulate you, Dylan, on the fact that you keep raising the bar. This is a good time to raise the bar, by the way, is the community relations and PR and stuff. So, keep up the good work. I just think that the public is really, really disconnected a lot from what we do, and the more we can get out, the better. So, good stuff.
Ms. Cadel?
To piggyback on what Mr. Roach said, you know, we get a lot of coverage on the bad stories. I mean, it's just the reality of the media market we live in. And, you know, I was thinking, we have changed so much the appearance when we walk into the lobby, and we have factoids, or we are celebrating the success of either students or our teachers. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we can start getting those stories out more to the schools, so that there's kind of, like, when parents are there for meetings, there's kind of a subliminal message that, "Here are some good things that are happening in Orange County Public Schools." Not that we want to take away from the information the schools are trying to get out, but I think as an add-on, and, you know, I know, I know that we're not a nonprofit, and a lot of times, those digital billboards go to nonprofits, but maybe we could figure out a way to talk to some of the people who have those digital billboards, that if they haven't sold the ad space, could we highlight either a phenomenal teacher, or a phenomenal program, or, you know, kind of highlight what we saw a couple of meetings ago with Wakava and the photonics program. And as we move to offering more industry certifications, that maybe there could be a public relations campaign that goes on, that's throughout the community, saying, you know, "If you are interested in auto mechanics, you know, give us a call, or here's where you can go." Just, you know, and maybe it needs to be some STEM stuff. You know, one of the things, I had the opportunity to serve on the Strategic Planning Committee for the Orlando Science Center, and we did a lot of talk about STEM. And, you know, we live in a STEM world. We know what STEM is here. But do parents at home truly know why STEM is important for their children? Do preschool parents know what STEM is, and why the sciences should be introduced at a younger and younger age? And one of the things the Science Center just did in their newest magazine is, they put out an article about why STEM was important for elementary school children. So, you know, I think, I think if we continue this dialogue, that we need to, we need to make it relevant for the general public. And, you know, it's kind of like, we started doing the strategic plans, you know, we have worked hard, and maybe the next thing is, and I know that maybe this room isn't equipped to do it, but maybe if we streamed these school board meetings live, that we could get more people who were watching, and if there was a way to say, you know, "Watch for the first 30 minutes of the meeting, if you can't watch the whole meeting, and see the good things that are happening in our schools." Just a few ideas off the top of my head.
Great points, all. Ms. Moore?
Mr. Thomas, thank you for your work. It's incredibly gratifying to see the numbers going up in such a measurable way to keep track of the progress. And when we talk to other districts, they tell us about the one PR person, their one-man show that they have, and, but yet, we're all in this together, and it's, we want to move public education ahead in this state. It really, it takes us getting the good message out, because otherwise, people have different opinions that may or may not be based on what's really going on. And Mrs. Cale, with regard to what you said when, well, she was here, but Mrs. School and I were, and you were as well, San Diego, we visited all of the booths with the companies that had school apps, and they're really, several that are, they're very cutting and genuine. One of the bells and whistles on it, besides, you know, tracking children's grades, notifying parents through, you know, text messages and whatnot, and all the thing that we really already have, was that whole piece about getting the word out to parents, because 80% of the community, regardless of their income level, have a smartphone. So, it's almost better than a website, or it was certainly better than the newspaper to communicate. It's even better than the television media. So, there were certainly several companies that had those capabilities, and, you know, in order to push out good news and more things going on, and they could be programmed by board members to have our schools, so that we could really even keep up better with events and activities and news, and how the students are doing. So, just put that in as a particular option, to be able to continue to get the good news of what our students and our teachers and community are doing. So, but thank you for your work. I see it improving every year, and we see it when I had a meeting the other day in Wintergarden, and everybody told me that they thought that this school district was doing a marvelous job, and their opinion of what we were doing had certainly risen, and I do think a lot of that's due to the work of your department. So, thank you so much.
Well, and I would just echo that, and I want to commend the board. I remember, I don't know how long you've been on board, Dylan. Has it been eight years now, nine years? I remember when Dylan's department was created, and I know, Ms. Cadel, you and Ms. Gordon and Mr. Roach had a lot to do with that, and it was something that I think had been long overdue. I think sometimes people hear PR, and they think it's just all, you know, glossing over things, but the truth of the matter is, I said earlier in the meeting when we had the Leadership Orange class, the thing that just is, it can be very frustrating, I think, for anybody in public education, is the disconnect between what schools are today, between those of us who know either because we have children in schools, or we're on a school board, or we're teachers or administrators, and what those who do not have children in school think public schools are. Because a lot of folks are still rooted back in the '70s, or the '80s, or even the '60s, in thinking that the public schools are the same way they were back then. And you're a big part of that. I want to echo something else that Ms. Moore said. I've heard a steady stream of comments for the last year, year and a half, and it really even began before that, about how folks believe that we're on the right trajectory, and how they're just really impressed with all the things that this administration is doing, Superintendent Jenkins, so that's a real credit to you and your entire team, and Mr. Walker before that. To echo something Ms. Cadel said, you know, I don't know if there's an opportunity, and there's nothing worse than a committee of eight, which is sort of what you have up here with the board, but every time I go to that OCPS homepage, and I know it's already crowded, and that may not be the best place, but just to kick around in the box of ideas, maybe idea of having some type of weekly or monthly video where folks can come on and, you know, hear the good news about OCPS. People like video, you know? It's a lot easier to click on video and watch it. And I know we already do that, and we put a lot of our stuff up there, but I don't know if it could be a dedicated site. I'd also love, and I don't know how much you're engaged with this, Mr. Thomas, but I would really like personally to be briefed, and if the whole board feels this way, maybe have you come back for the board as a whole. But we put out a bid recently that was won by three companies on school newsletter services. And, you know, I've been waiting for that, to see what that results in. And when those, when that work product starts to come back to us, I'd really personally like to see it. I don't want to bring the whole board through it, but I see Mr. Roach saying him too, just because that's so important. And, you know, even though we awarded that bid, I really want to see what the template is for those school newsletters, and what those companies that won that bid. I don't know if you all remember this, it was on the bid sheet about a month and a half ago, what it looks like, because I think that's probably the most important way of communicating with our parents. Most parents of children, they get most of their public school communication through bookbag inserts, backpack inserts, newsletters, things like that, that they get from the school. And the last thing I want to say is, I just want to echo something that I think I heard Ms. Cadel say as well, which is, you know, we're going through, I am, I'm not sure I'm going to use right terms for procurement here, Mr. Eugene, but we're going through a process where we awarded a contract to a company to evaluate our progress book and the menu offerings out there, as far as what companies offer out there, and make a recommendation to us on how we upgrade our progress book. And, you know, I am so intensely interested in that, because there are so many different possibilities out there, and I've seen some of the other products, and we desperately need an app application, I think, for our parents, one that's very user-friendly, where parents can go on their iPhone, or their Samsung, or whatever, and click on an app, and see how their student's doing. And there are also applications out there. I got very excited about one that was shown to me a while back, where you can click on your student and see how many credits you need, what courses you need. You can even go so far, I believe, I may have been getting a good sales job, but even click on your kid and look at his or her GPA, and they can tell you, okay, some of the sites, if you want your kid to go to University of Central Florida... if you want your kid to go to University of Central Florida, you know, here's the minimum grade point average and score needed, and your child has XYZ grade point average, and, you know, you can or you cannot get there in time, or if you want to go to UF, or Florida Southern, or whatever. So, I, just to wrap it up, I just think we need to have an app that's user-friendly, so parents can track their child's progress. And the last thing is a little bit off reservation, a little bit, I know I'm saying a lot here, but the one most common complaint, and I know this is not your responsibility, Mr. Thomas, but I'm just going to go ahead and make it now, because I say this all the time, and I know there's only so much the administration can do. The most common complaint I get from parents is, and it only applies to a small fraction, I want to qualify what I'm about to say, is about teachers not using progress book in a timely manner. And I, this is a broad-brush statement, I know I'm probably breaching too far when I say this. It's been my observation as a parent, that they're great in elementary school, they start to tell off in middle school, and the complaints I get mostly come from parents of high school students, that they cannot see how their child's doing until it's too late. You know, "Well, yeah, I found out he or she missed the assignment, but I found out a week after it was due, or I found out, you know, they got a 65 on their test, but I found out two weeks after the test was taken." So, I don't know if we can continue to work on that, but, you know, I think we just need to continually reinforce with our teachers that it's, I believe, a management directive, and they're supposed to be using progress book and making sure that it's current and up to date. So, thank you for this presentation. Superintendent Jenkins, I thought this was excellent. Ms. Cadel?
This may not be the right place to put it, but since we're talking about public relations, I had an idea, and I had talked to the superintendent about it, and, you know, we had a great presentation on what Lake County Public Schools is doing with one school that is using iPads, and they're all digital, and what the students are doing. And we have an opportunity next year to open our doors to seven pilot schools that are going to be totally digital. And when we talk about, our public doesn't know what that means. I just think we have an opportunity, maybe in late October, the beginning of November, when we've got everything up and running, to open those schools up on a Saturday or an afternoon, and invite the community to come by and see what a digital school looks like. And because there's one in every school district, you know, they wouldn't have to really travel too far. And if we were in a position that our students could be leading the class in some of the classrooms for them to see, I mean, I use an iPad, I'm an iPad kind of girl that has been using one since they first came out, because I just decided I needed to stretch my brain some. But I was sitting next to the superintendent, and the apps that Lake County Public Schools had on there, I mean, I was looking at NASA shooting down to the Earth, and then I was at the Smithsonian, and then I was at some historical site, and I mean, the, the things that are out there, and, you know, I could build different molecules, I didn't know what the heck I was doing, but I was having fun moving them over, and then, you know, it would go all wackadoodle. But, you know, I think that opportunity is here for us next year, and I think it would behoove us to figure out how to have a community-wide celebration on, this is what a digital school looks like.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. You know, it was a great presentation. And, you know, on that point, board members, you know, we're doing the State of the Schools, which was part of his presentation, this week from Thursday at Oak Ridge. We're doing it at Oak Ridge for a reason, a strategic reason, which is, you know, we may be having a conversation with the voters about the sales tax in the next year. And, you know, we're going to be talking about some of these coming initiatives, including the digital project. So, please encourage folks to come out to that. I think you're going to see, we're going to try to take full advantage of that beautiful sound system and lighting system in that auditorium in a way that we can't do in a hotel room, so we're hoping it'll be a fun presentation. All right. We are now into our regular agenda. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
Chairman, we have three changes. Item 604 is withdrawn. Item 10.01 is moved to consent item 1601. That is particularly item 14 on the bid matrix. And then, on item 1601, we are moving the attachment also to non-consent.
Chair Fein's cause them, and the agenda is proposed by the superintendent, and I have a motion to do so. It's been moved by Ms. Flynn. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any discussion or debate on that? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign. Show that motion adopted. All right. We do not have any public hearing issues. We are now on to the consent agenda. We have two speakers, or one speaker on two topics on the consent agenda. Ms. Diana Moore, first one is on item 4.01, which is a personnel agenda.
Good evening.
Be your main, it's got to be.
Yes, sir.
A specific item on the personnel agenda.
It's a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Diana Moore, 1020 Webster Avenue. I watched a local news station recently show a story about a company that was hiring teachers outside of our employees and paying them $60 an hour to tutor. So, I have a question. First, is that true? Because I'm asking, since it was on a news report. And if that is true, is it true that the employees who are tutoring on this personnel agenda make $17 and $19.50 to tutor? So, that is my question. And then, to answer your question about why they're probably not getting to their progress book, is because they're in meetings and they're tutoring after school for a second job. I think that's, might be one of the answers why they're not getting to it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moore. All right. You can go and sit down. Stay up here, because you're coming right back up, I know. I don't want to set a bad precedent here, and, and this, this is painful, because we go back a long way, and you're a partner in this endeavor, and, and we do have a partnership relationship, but as, I'm trying to figure out how to say this the right way. I don't want folks to think that the public comment portion in the meeting is a chance to come up and ask the school board questions. It's not. I'm going to go ahead and have the question answered, but, but it's the last time I'll do that, because it would be unfair to members of the public. Every time we have a public hearing, whether on a zoning issue, whether it's on a student issue, whether it's on a discipline issue, an expulsion issue, an employee matter, I'm always reminding the public that they're here to testify. And it's not a dialogue, it's not a conversation, and that they want to meet with board members and have a conversation, they can do that. I've never known a board member not to set up an appointment time to do that. In deference to the fact that this is the president of the CTA and our valued partner, we're going to go ahead and answer the question. I'm going to take a stab at it, then I'm going to see if the superintendent would like to add to it. It is true, and it's true for factors beyond our control. It's true because supplemental education services funding, one, we have to take any provider who is qualified by the state of Florida, and we have to take the contract that is approved by the state of Florida, and we do not have any authority over the reimbursement rates that are paid to them. That just recently changed, this recent legislative session, where now, I believe, if I understand the legislation that just went through, we can now select the providers that we think are high-performing. One of our frustrations has been, throughout this process, Ms. Moore, that the state would qualify literally over 50 companies as providers. We have absolutely no say over whether they are able to deliver tutoring services to Orange County Public School students. We had to take them, and we have to take them, we have to take them with their rates, which then allows them to go out there and market to students in our schools. That just changed with the recent legislative session, and we're not sure how we're going to proceed yet. We're going to confer with the superintendent about this, but I will tell you, it's been an area of great frustration for every one of the 67 school districts in the state of Florida, throughout the country. Federal legislation until last year mandated this, because most of those funds are, I believe, Title I funds, if I'm not mistaken, and they're set aside in Title I's funds, and it's been well-reported, our inability to control those providers. But unfortunately, it is true, but for reasons beyond our control. We would also, I will tell you, because we held a work session on this, this board is very, very interested in trying to find a way, under the constraints of federal and state law, to use more of our own teachers for tutoring services, and we've had entire work sessions on that topic, literally spent an hour or two. And until this year, we were prohibited from doing that as a district, unless we actually went out and formed a separate corporation and business entity to do that, which candidly, that's a stretch. We don't really want to get into business of incorporating businesses to do that kind of service. Superintendent, did I, did I get it mostly right? Do you want to add anything, or, okay. All right. The next one is item 6.03, which is on grant applications. Yes, oh, Mrs. Gordon, I'm sorry, I didn't see you punch your button, ma'am. Mrs. Gordon.
Oh, I punched it a long time ago. I need the record to reflect, I need to clarify the president of CTA's statement. Teachers within my district, there is a deadline and a certain date, and I just ask if the superintendent, I think, would, I ask Ms. Palmer to clear that up for us, because I know that they get overwhelmed, but we're not overwhelmed, because we're working a second job, or working in the afternoon. We are overwhelmed because of FCAT. We're overwhelmed, let the record reflect, because of FCAT planning. We are overwhelmed because of end of course. I don't want to label everyone from Algebra I, Geometry, Civic, United States History. I've had to come in and help out at my school, and the many more, and of course, that, that we have to give and take, they are overwhelmed. Their lesson plans must be brought up to date. This is the end of the year. Anybody that did not have their lesson plan together, needs to go back and try to update and catch up. We're in the middle of our ippy dippies. We're at the final of our ippy dippies. There's a date that it should have been in, on the third quarter. Now, we're in the final stages, that has got to be met. We're in faculty meetings. Faculty meetings that are not our regular faculty meetings, but faculty meetings that help us with the end of the year, for closing out the school. We are working with graduation. We are working with Marzano. Need I add more? Which takes quite a bit of our time as teachers. We're at the end of the year on all reports and getting our classroom ready. What I wanted to ask, and let the record reflect, we, what is considered a timely manner, I think the parents are not understanding if they're calling in. I know that in Osceola and Orange, and the teachers that work in my district, there's a deadline. There is a deadline for progress report, and if you don't get that progress report in, in Osceola, at a time, you don't go. You do not leave that building. All of us have been at that building till 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 o'clock in the evening, getting it in, because the tech must close it out. There is a deadline in Orange County, that that progress report must be in. So, in all fairness, I don't want those two statements, and even the statement that the parent made to you, is not totally true. So, I think you need to understand, and Dr. Jenkins may want a staff member to address it, to set the record straight, so that people would not go out and think that we at OCPS is not reporting our progress report grades to our parents in a timely manner.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Gordon.
I don't want it to be just left like we're not doing it. So, I asked Dr. Palmer, Dr. Jenkins, Mr. Chairman, in reference to it, do you have a staff member that can address it for the public, so that will not have to be addressed at a later date? That there is a time for the progress report to be in.
Okay. So, do you'd like the superintendent to have somebody answer that issue?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Superintendent, can you address that, the deadline for progress reports?
We do have schedules. We do have schedules. Principals, on teacher workdays and other days, there are schedules and expectations that progress reports are to be completed and administered, provided to parents in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Mr. Roach?
You know, I don't know exactly, I'm probably like Ms. Gordon, I don't know what to say, but I need to say something about it, but I, I will, I think I was looking at my schedule, trying to find out. I'm going to Boone High School to talk with the teachers. It's my 33rd school that I will talk to faculty this year, and I'll just directly ask them if there are issues with progress book. But I think, I think, Mr. Siblet, probably, from what I'm gathering from talking to teachers, and I think I gave you all this at the retreat, there are three big concerns. One of their huge concerns is just this feeling of overwhelming, overwhelmingness. That's a huge blanket, you know, what underneath that blanket, I think, might be, is that, you know, Mrs. Gordon started on it right there, and, and Mrs. Moore also commented on it, but I think that there, there's just a lot to do, and I think probably, and because you're hearing it not all the time, but some of the time, you probably are catching the ones that probably just say, "Look, you know, I've got time to do 10 things. This is the 11th thing, not going to make it." So, I, I'm trying to support teachers on, based on what they're telling me, and they are telling me they are very overwhelmed, and that's what we're talking.
Excuse me, a point of order.
Oh, yeah.
Are we not on the consent agenda?
We are.
And aren't we on the approval of the consent agenda?
We are.
Thank you.
We are. But, but in deference to them, their, their addressing matters are raised by the speaker. So. Mr. Roach?
I wish I remembered where I was. Anyway, hey, they got a tough job out there this year, and it's not getting any easier. So, I won't, I'm not going to make excuses for anybody. All of us have tough jobs, but I do think that that's one thing that's going to, but I will get a direct answer. I'll just flat-out ask them, "What's the deal with progress reports?"
Thank you. All right. You know, and, and I will just say, you know, I, I've queued up myself, you know, I've recognized that the teachers are overwhelmed, but I just want you all to know, though, that management directives and policies are one thing. I will tell you, whenever I talk about this in the public, even tonight, there are a lot of folks or parents that nod their head. You should know that there are some teachers who just flat-out tell their students, "I don't like progress book, I'm not going to use it." And that's not anecdote, that's firsthand. Now, what do you do in that situation? Do you, do you rock the boat and go talk to the principal and raise a stink about it? No, you don't, because, you know, one of the first things you learn as, as a parent, and I think I speak for all parents, is you deal with it, because you want your child to succeed, or that child to succeed. And by the way, it's not my child, I'm talking, I'm talking about other parents that I've talked to, and not any particular school either. I don't want this to be misinterpreted. But, and I will say, there seems to be a degree of independence that I've always scratched my head at, and we've even had this conversation among high school teachers. I think they get a little bit more independent than perhaps the elementary and the middle school ones, and that may be an overstatement, too, but, you know, I never experienced that from parents that I dealt with at the elementary and middle school levels. But I know the superintendent and her team do their best to make them all follow the policies, and I have no doubt that there is a posting requirement. You're a little bit of a hard spot if a teacher just says, "Hey, I don't like progress book, and I'm not going to do it." You know? What can you do? All right. Ms. Flynn?
I'm going to come in at a little bit of a different slant, because I'm thinking, you know, my son didn't have any of that. I never had progress book for day one. But I'm thinking in high school, there is an expectation that students do start to take a little bit more responsibility, and maybe there can be guidelines about how much is posted, and how much, you know, just how much? Because there is that expectation, I believe, that at some point, the students do have to start becoming responsible for their coursework. So, maybe there is some mid-ground, or what's the word, middle ground of sort of a minimum guidelines, and maybe there already are, but, you know, all of our kids got through, and I know I'm sounding like a dinosaur, I don't want to say that, but, you know, sometimes they just have to, you have, you have to give them that responsibility. I mean, I just, I just think there's a middle ground for this, and I've read reports, you know, at some point, you have to give your kids a little rope. Sometimes they hang themselves, and sometimes, you know, they, they rise to the expectation. And that's not to say, you know, I had my, I like to say, I had my foot up my son's tailpipe his whole educational career, so certainly I wasn't a tailpipe his whole educational career, so certainly I wasn't a complete hands-off, hands-off parent, but there were times you just, you just have to let them fly a little bit. So I just wanted to put that in there, is that it is an awful lot to expect of teachers, but maybe there's a middle ground that we can, we can give guidelines so that both sides are a little happier with it.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. All right, the next speaker is Ms. Moore again on agenda item 6.0, and I'm assuming you put 6.0. Is this on 6.03, Ms. Moore, which is the Race to the Top Evaluation Systems Monitoring project? If not, which grant is it on? It's got to be on a specific agenda item.
6.01.
6.01, which is on the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant?
Yes.
And for juvenile justice students as well. Okay.
First, thank you for answering the question before. Following Robert's rules, I guess I will ask that you not approve the grant this evening and hold off on it for a reason, to get input from teachers. As teachers, we certainly support the district gaining additional dollars to support what we do. CTA sent a demand to bargain letter regarding the impact of these grants upon any working conditions, salaries, and benefits for our teachers, and we have five teachers from CTA who do sit on a grant committee, and they're going to meet this Thursday. So I'm here to ask that we get input regarding these grants that you're going to approve this evening. Now, how that's going to happen, I don't know, because the committee meets Thursday, and that's where you would get the input. So I'm a little perplexed as to how to ask this under Robert's rules, except maybe to ask you to pull it until that committee meets, they can look over the proposal and add some information and input.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moore, for your testimony. Ms. Flynn, is this from the last time? Okay. Ms. Gordon. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, I don't know which way you're going with this, but, you know, I think I hear Dr. Jenkins a lot of time saying things. This is not, let me clear it up, because, so I can get my understanding. We have not been granted this grant. Am I right, Dr. Jenkins? We're just putting in for the grant. Okay, we don't have it. We don't have the money, we have not been approved for it, but we had a deadline, and we're trying to reach that deadline. Then the committee, if the grant is granted, based on what is in there, I know, I've been under a lot of grant programs in Orange County, and I do know that there are certain adjustments that can be made. Can, Dr. Jenkins, is there a staff or Mr. Chairperson, that can clear that up for us, please? Because we have not, this is, you just, we all know that grants are timely, and we are about getting every penny we can in this school district for our children. That's number one goal. The kids come first. The kids come first. I'm hoping that the committee, when they meet, if we are granted this grant, we don't always get them all, but if we are granted this grant, there are some adjustments that can be made. Mr. Chairman, if you could find out from the superintendent, who can address that for me for clarification, please?
Superintendent Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. When it comes to grants, this administration and our grants department seek out grants. We do not need approval ahead of time in most instances for grants. If it is required, then we would seek that out. That does not mean working conditions, if impacted, would not be collectively bargained. There is no prohibition in us applying for the grants at this point.
And with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Madam Superintendent, for clearing that up, because I know how hard it is to even apply and put the paperwork together. And I know that we have one of the sharpest, hardest-working grant department in the nation, and I think for them to even seek out, and we, as a board, has mandated on many occasions that they go and seek, and I do not feel that they will be neglecting the committee. I feel that once the grant, and I hope, we pray, that we get it, and that this committee will go in and formulate it and figure the best use for it, because we do have to make, you know, make the compensation for it. We have to report back on it. So with that in mind, I could not vote against it. I would have to vote for it, because we don't have the money yet.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Gordon. All right, thank you for those comments. Seeing no further, board members queued up to speak on this topic. We are now on the motion to approve the consent agenda. All those, everybody understand what you're voting for, for the consent agenda? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. All right, we are now on item 16, non-consent items, and the only thing we have there is an item that was polled. Mr. Rodriguez, it's my understanding that you're handling that, sir?
School board members pursuant to section 112, 3143 Florida statute, that statute provision requires that we disclose any time there is a voting conflict for any school board member, and specifically, it provides in subsection four, that no appointed public officer shall participate in any matter which were to near to the special private gain or loss of a relative or business associate of the public officer. That definition of relative also includes the term father-in-law. As such, Ms. Robinson, as she has previously, is disclosing that her father-in-law is a part-owner of Shaw Mechanical, which is listed as one of the lowest and responsive and responsible bidders for publicly bid contracts, and they're identified in your packet under item 1601. And according to Florida law, she's also disclosed that conflict to the school board through a letter that has been submitted to your clerk, Ms. McGill, and she has done so in a timely fashion. As a result of that, she will not be participating in this vote, and that's why it's been segregated from the regular bid matrix. So I worked with her to make sure she's followed all the legal requisites and has done her part.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Are there any questions? Any comments? All right, board members, you are now on item, new item 16.01, which was previously part of item 10.01, the bid matrix. Everybody understand what you're voting for? Okay, let me first take a motion to approve item 16.01, please.
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Cadel. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Gordon. Is there any debate or discussion on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted. Okay, we are now on reports by the school board attorney, Mr. Rodriguez.
No reports at this time.
Superintendent Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. Since it has been newsworthy of late, I did want to assure the school board that we are on top of the issue that took place at Glen Ridge this week, where there was a cartridge of ammunition found, no actual weapon was found. Want to thank Orlando Police Department for working so diligently in collaboration with the school, like for the public to just be aware, when such a call or threat comes in, our police department is very adept at handling it and taking over, taking charge at that point. We will continue to communicate with parents appropriate information. Believe everything was handled quite well at Glen Ridge, so we commend the staff. But also wanted to thank Orlando Police Department. I know it's been newsworthy, wanted to assure the board that we're on top of it, and that community will continue to get daily communication from the principal.
Thank you for that, Superintendent.
Can I add on?
Yes, Ms. Cadel.
To the administrative staff there and to the teachers who stepped up, and when the car line was out there yesterday, Ms. Lister was out there, who I think some of you might have seen an article that she's retiring after 30, 30 years? More than that, a long time. She's been there, it's the only place she ever taught. She was out there welcoming the parents, saying, we are so glad that you were here, you know, everything's okay. And so the teachers, the staff, the principal, the assistant principals, they all need to be commended for being in a very, very tough situation and handling it in the very, very best way to assure the safety of all of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. All right, committee reports. Ms. Cadel, I think you said there's no budget report, correct? Okay.
The only budget report is because we are still in negotiations with CTA. The budget meeting for Monday has been canceled.
All right, thank you. Communications, Ms. Moore.
I just wanted to bring up one item in, in an attempt, as maybe in future years, we may want to look at a lot of the community engagement that this board specifically is handling, aside from what Mr. Thomas's shop is doing. And so we may have a meeting about that, but the one thing that would really help is if we, and we could sit here and pick a color, I'll pick purple, but any time you have some sort of media engagement, or you're out talking to your Chamber of Commerce, or you've arranged for something, I know, I have to remind myself, if it's not in the calendar, it's going to be forgotten, and it won't be able to be counted. So if we could just maybe, going into the next year, start notating some things in your calendar, when you have engaged the public in a certain way, if you would like it to be counted in the future. We haven't really begun to do that yet, but we would like to. So I think it's just very important that, that we also engage in trying to count and measure so that we can improve as the years go on. So I know it would be impossible to really do that at this point unless we notate our calendar. So that was just one little tip. If you could use purple and write what it is, that would really help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All right, I don't think we have any more committee reports, do we, board members? Okay. Okay, okay. I've handed out the latest work session schedule. Board members, I want you to know, I haven't forgotten, I have about four or five requests that we've got to get calendared. We're sort of getting into the fall now, so they're not on here yet. We've been very, very busy, all of us have, the last week or two, it's that time of year, but I haven't forgotten your requests. So if you don't see it on there, rest assured it will be on their next board meeting. Any statement of policy level issues aboard, like to agenda for a future meeting or work session? No? Okay. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. You know, we have the room set up for our super-scholar ceremony coming up with all the colleges, and I just wanted to say something about Colonial High School. In keeping with our quest to bring relevance and rigor to our students of all Orange County and bring in students and bring in different programs, Colonial has been approved to bring in the Cambridge AICE program, which is the Advanced International Certificate of Education diploma, and they'll start this coming, coming year. It's a program that's rigorous, relevant, balanced programs, that encourages high academic standards. It's part of the University of Cambridge, UK. So it concentrates on three areas, of course, math and science, language, arts and humanities. A little bit, you know, compared against the International Baccalaureate Program a lot. This course provides a little bit more flexibility in the course offerings of what the students take, so they can gear it a little bit more toward their field of interest. So real proud that they're coming in. We're looking forward to that. The Liberty Middle School has been approved for that, for that middle school level program as well, so it'll be a nice feeder pattern into Colonial High School. So real excited about starting that and, you know, providing just another opportunity for high-level studies for our students.
Thank you for announcing that. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, I really would just wanted to thank Mr. Morris and Dr. Kathy Pope for their wonderful, on the committee that you all allowed me to chair, with the community engagement. You really, it is not business as usual. You can no longer walk into an Orange County public school and be presented a slide by an architect. Once those parents get through with that architect and the program managers, Mr. Morris' office will never be the same. Those meetings are going well. I really want to thank Dr. Pope and the principals and the parents and students for Pine Rock Elementary, Richmond Heights Elementary, and especially Ecclestone. Ecclestone did a comeback, and everybody who ever been there, from Ms. Walden, Eddie K. Walden, all the teachers who taught there first came back, and it was just unbelievable. And then they did the welcome to, from the new students, and I was surprised at the diversity that had moved into our neighborhood. We were worried as a board that it may be an all African-American school, but I will assure you that that's not the way it is. When I walked in the auditorium of Ecclestone, I was just kind of shocked and dumbfounded, because I did not expect the massive, that Sandy Simpson and I and Dr. Pope had gone over the diversity, but people have moved into the area just for the new school. So I would encourage you, oh, and I want to thank Dr. Pope again, and Mr. Morris' staff for shingle creek. We did our community meeting, and they are giving them an airful. They are designing their schools, they're telling them where they want the bus route, they're letting them know where they want the parking lot, they're letting them know where they want the school to sit, so that the neighbors can welcome them. They have never been able to do it, but you've allowed me to chair that committee along with Jasmine Lambert and Mr. Morris' staff, and give the parents the input, and they could not believe it. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I hope that you all utilize it and allow your parents to share and give suggestions when you get to the first 30% design stage. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that, and thank you, Mr. Morris and Dr. Pope.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. All right, is there anything else for the good of the order? If there's not, we are adjourned.
I'm a student at Harvard.
MIT.
Caltech.
Columbia.
Our advantage, support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocpss.net or call 407-317-3200.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at commoncoreworks.org.